Well.
Oh.
Please.
You didn't.
Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council meeting for this Monday, August 4, 2025. Welcome to those of you who are here. It's great to see a robust crowd tonight, and welcome to those of you who are attending at home via Zoom. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Bokey. Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Sella.
Here.
Pearson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Wayland.
Present.
Thank you very much. Now, if you'd please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, again, welcome and thank you for coming tonight. It's always great to see folks on a sunny Monday evening. Our first portion of tonight's agenda begins with proclamations and presentations, and tonight we are proud to have a proclamation recognizing August 5, 2025 as National Night Out. For this, I will, I think, meet Chief Patrick Smith at the podium to present the proclamation, and then the chief will give a few words perhaps about the pending National Night Out event tomorrow. It's indeed a good reminder and an opportunity for those of us who embrace all things public safety and neighborhood watch awareness and togetherness opportunities with and for our neighbors. And National Night Out is that opportunity to do just that. So the city of Lakewood is proud to present this proclamation. Whereas on Tuesday, August 5, 2025, residents of the city of Lakewood will have an opportunity to get together in their neighborhoods to participate in the annual National Night Out against crime. And whereas National Night Out provides an exceptional opportunity for the city of Lakewood to join a national event where thousands of other communities and millions of people around the world come together to promote cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas Lakewood residents play a vital role in assisting the Lakewood Police Department through joint crime and drug prevention efforts here in the city of Lakewood. And whereas it is essential that all residents of Lakewood be made aware of the importance of community policing partnerships. that all residents of Lakewood be made aware of the importance of community policing partnerships, our neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation programs, and the impacts that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in their own neighborhoods and certainly here within the City of Lakewood. And whereas National Night Out enhances that relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community. Now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaims August 5, 2025, as National Night Out Against Crime here in the City of Lakewood, and we urge all residents to participate in those events throughout the community, all aimed towards bringing people together to strengthen our neighborhood bonds and to engage with police and city officials. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention and our fire department officials as well, Assistant Chief McCurdy. So thank you all for making National Night Out an incredible opportunity. Proclaim this fourth day of August 2025, all of us here in the Lakewood City Council. So Chief, thanks for coordinating the effort. I'll give you this, and if you'd like to say a few words about tomorrow's event.
Uh, thank you. Uh, tomorrow, we have a very robust, um, national night out. We look forward to seeing all of the community members out there. Our council member, mayor, deputy mayor will be out to meet the public. And so we're looking very, we are looking forward to seeing everyone, and we want everyone to participate and become a part of the National Night Out. It's an outstanding event, and thank you very much for the proclamation.
Look forward to it. Thank you. Photograph. All right, come on down, guys. Yep.
Yay.
We go over here, then. We'll do that. As we often say in the City of Lakewood, uh, we mean and appreciate business here. And so we are excited tonight to present the business showcase for Children's Trading Post. And Cheyenne, if you want to come up and meet me at the podium, if you're there. Very good. I'll meet you up there. Well, Sabrina Jones is here on behalf of our business showcase. You are business partner and store manager, right, from Children's Trading Post? And you're attending on behalf of Cheyenne Corrente, who's the present owner as well. So this business showcase proclamation is presented to Children's Trading Post, recognized as the August 2025 Business Showcase because of their dedication to providing Lakewood parents with affordable and accessible necessities for raising children and the widespread community impact in carrying out their mission. So what we always love to do is provide a short video, and then, uh, we will give you an opportunity, Sabrina, to give us a little bit more information about your business. So Madam Clerk.
Hi, my name is Cheyenne Corrente, and the name of my store is Children's Trading Post. My business is a children's resale store, which means customers can bring in the items that their children are no longer using, like clothing they've outgrown, maybe equipment that they don't use anymore, and sell it to us. And we give them cash or store credit in return for those items, and then we resell them. Whenever people bring in items that we are unable to take for one reason or another, as long as they are still safe and usable, then we put them out here in our giveaway if the customer doesn't want them. And anybody in the community is welcome to come and take these. I just absolutely love having a place where people love to go and shop. I love hearing about the amazing things that they find. I love hearing personal stories about experiences when they come in here. I just, I really enjoy having a place that people enjoy going to. That's probably my proudest thing, is just the fact that I never envisioned my store to be this big or this busy, and it's just happened all along. It's on.
Fantastic.
So we are located in Lakewood, just pretty much around the corner from the town center on Gravel Lake Drive. Um, we are pretty much open, uh, Monday through Saturday, and we just love having the community there, because if, without the community, we could not be where we are today. Without our employees, we could not be where we are today. So on behalf of Cheyenne, we are very happy to receive the reward from you guys, or award from you guys. Thank you so much for the honor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Sabrina, for coming tonight. Now, with my kids at 31, 28, 19, I know where to bring all sorts of items. That's my.
Leave with fewer items.
It's always a goal to leave with fewer items. Well, very good. Well, that takes us to the public comment portion of tonight's agenda. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Ms. Brianna Schumacher, at 6000 Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or via email at bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the council electronically, and for purposes of our record, I ask that the city clerk read the names of those who have submitted written comments in advance.
Uh, we received one comment. About Edgewater, Edgewater Park, and it is Polly McLean and Joe.
Thank you very much. I reviewed that. Very good comments. Members of the audience may comment on those matters pertaining to city business here under the public comments section of tonight's agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. We simply ask that you state your name, come up to the dais or the podium, rather, state your name, residents of record like Paul Bokey, Lakewood, Washington, and then you'll be provided your three minutes with the clock. Virtual comments are certainly allowed. Live virtual comments may be done via Zoom. So please, if you'd like to be attendee on Zoom, dial the telephone number 253-215-8782, enter the meeting ID number 868-7263-2373, and once you enter the room, uh, you will be able to use the raise the hand feature to be called upon, and so we'll make sure to look for you in the Zoom room. Now, please note, tonight there is a, a public, um, hearing, and the public hearing is the hearing on the 2025 Annual Development Regulation Amendments. So if you're here to speak on that particular topic, I would ask that you reserve your testimony for that section of tonight's agenda, which will be the first item under the regular agenda, public hearings and appeals. So anything else is fair game. It's all fair game, but if you want to have your comments for that particular record, hold your fire until that portion of tonight's agenda. So I will first call on those who are here in person, who have signed in on the sign-in sheet. And again, if you haven't done that, it's okay, because we ask anyone who would like to provide public comment to just queue up after those who have signed in, and certainly we'll call upon you. The first individual is Mr. Julius Brown.
Greetings.
Greetings.
My name is Julius Brown. I'm the chair of the Lakewood African American Police Advisory Committee, a member of the PSAC, PC FIT. I rise today to speak on behalf of the faith and trust that the LAPAC has had in the job of our chief of police is doing in our community. Some of the accomplishments, Chief Smith, Lakewood achieved 19% drop off in total crime in 2024, the sharpest annual decrease in recent years across multiple categories. Arrests increased substantially in 2023. Arrests were up 26.6% versus 2022, including nearly 60% more felony arrests. This is the first time that I can remember Lakewood having zero homicides this far into the year. Chief Smith is also deeply focused on visible community partnerships, celebrations, youth events, mental health initiatives, and positive outreach efforts. Chief Smith has, has achieved great things while navigating the pitfalls put in place for him to fail. Being a black man in a climate that exists today, he has continued to build inroads for those who have had a longstanding distrust of police. I can't tell you how refreshing that is. Today, youth of color can see themselves in a different light. I sat on the hiring board for the chief position, and it was consistent of just about everyone who interviewed the candidate that Patrick Smith was the best candidate for the job. I really hoped that Lakewood would do the right thing, and when they did, I felt we had turned the corner. Despite that acceptance, I don't see the type of support for our chief that he deserves. Instead, it seems that the city continues to undermine his authority and overturn actions for the betterment of the community overall. What example does that set for the rank and file officers? City leaders remained silent when officers were using racial and sexist jokes on the job. They were restored to their, continue their tirade in the community. Now, the News Tribune is running a report that the city council is set to authorize approval of a payout by way of a consent agreement without public discussion for someone not deserving. That's not a good look for Lakewood. Citizens of Lakewood have a saying how the money is spent. Doing under-table deals with people under investigation seems unscrupulous. Please consider your actions and how they are perceived in the public forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, John Rozell. Hey, John.
Well, a little bit of background. Uh, my neighbor has had a for-profit homeless camp in the backyard next to me, and, um, on Friday, the 25th, at 1:00 PM, the Lakewood Building Inspector signed off on a giant shed in the backyard while there were homeless people living in tents in the backyard. That just doesn't seem right. That's egregious behavior. You know, um, he walked past the tents, the garbage, the squalor, and okayed further construction. And I have a picture of the mini house, which the owner, co-owner, has told me will be a residence. They're building a triplex. This is what she has told me many times. Now, this weekend, the homeless did move out. All right, there were three of them. There was a 56-year-old man, a 62-year-old woman, and their adult daughter. So that's no longer a situation. But to approve a, you know, mini house, giant shed, while this is going on, and all the garbage and clutter and squalor, you know, the city lost an opportunity. They could have said, well, you know, we're gonna pause this, and when you make these corrections, then you can have your permit to build this oversized shed. So I just think there was a huge, you know, opportunity missed, you know, when that happened. And, um, you know, that's, that's all I really have. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, our Public Works and Community Development Director, Mr. Remack, is in the back. He may be able to address some of your questions rather quickly. Yep. Next, Janet Spingath.
Hello, I'm Janet Spingath. I'm from Lakewood, and my concern is with the Old Settler Cemetery. Um, we have set it aside because it's a piece of original prairie, which is great. We don't want to mow it. We want to be sure that we, you know, let all the seeds flourish that can, but the, the branches from the trees are reaching down into this tall grass. I became concerned about a fire hazard, and I brought it up with our neighborhood association with the, the fire chief there. And, um, then I'm still concerned, so I went and talked with, um, David Shepherd. He's the West Pierce, um, Fire, what, Maintenance or Prevention Officer. And he said, yeah, it's, it's a problem. They just don't have enough, um, men to get the trees taken care of. And I caught, uh, called Nikki York and said, how about if we have a volunteer project to get the trees limbed up? She said, we'll look into it. So I'm just telling you, if you drive by Washington, on Washington Boulevard, look at the Old Settler Cemetery, the branches, the dead branches are touching the grass. And, I mean, we knew what happened in Fort Silicon when there was a grass fire. I just don't want to see that happen in Lake City. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Kurt Spingath.
Hello, my name is Kurt Spingath, and I am representing the American Lake Improvement Club. I'm president of the American Lake Improvement Club, and I'm also a member of the, uh, American Lake Management District, uh, um, committee. So I have a couple of different comments. One is, um, for the current consideration of, of paying aquatechnics more for 2025. Uh, my concern there is that we have a fixed amount that we are paying as shoreline owners, uh, per foot, and that lasts through, uh, the 10-year sunset. We're in year seven right now. Um, so we're beginning year seven. And, uh, so we've got several more years of that to go. So I would like to have some consideration of what, what that entails. Um, we had to go to the, uh, the state to get a grant for an extra $75,000 for this year's, um, application. And I know that we are banking, what, $25,000 for into next year. Uh, we were able to spend that 50-plus what we have in the, uh, in the account from the shoreline owners for this year. So I'd just like to have some, uh, some accounting on that and some consideration for, uh, if we spend more money per acre, less acres we can do, and we're already behind on our application met, uh, abilities. Uh, the second thing is, um, we have a real problem with the American Lake, uh, water level. It's been brewing for the last several years with the lower rainfall. We have, uh, less, less inflow, and we have a lot of outflow. The outflow has been exacerbated by Pierce County and by removing two feet of board from the weir that, that, the fish weir that is not part of their system that they're supposed to be maintaining. I would like the city council and the mayor to have more voice with the Pierce, with Pierce County, um, to be able to resolve those issues in a favorable way. I think the best way to be, would be to not remove boards until we have rain events that could be a cause for flooding. The only reason they've stated that they're keeping those boards out during the timing of, of the winter is that they're afraid of a few people who have, uh, concerns about flooding. So, um, if we go back to the, what was, was before 2012, that would be removing more boards, uh, no boards. At 2012 to 2022, somewhere in there, they started removing one board. And somewhere along the line, we're not quite sure, they started removing three boards. That's two feet of water we are not retaining to that lake for, uh, the, the summer use. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last individual who signed in on the sign-in sheet, but again, let that not deter you. If you'd like to make public comment tonight, feel free to queue up. Welcome.
Hello. I'm Christina Minetti at Lakewood, and, um, I think it's time to admit that not enough is being done to protect the gary oaks in Lakewood. I hope everyone is well-rested this evening. A few days ago, I discovered that a large gary oak had been cut down next to St. John's Lutheran Church on Bridgeport, and a city employee told me that the tree cutting had been permitted there. Actually, didn't tell me, but posted it online. Four other oaks had been mutilated with limbs ripped off and fresh gouges in their trunks. I've known the oaks on that property for more than 50 years, when they grew peacefully, undisturbed, providing habitat and shade not far from the house where I grew up. It is very painful for me to see these oaks, which are supposed to be protected in Lakewood, being mutilated and cut down. As you see, I'm losing, I'm losing the ability to stay on a. As you see, I'm losing I'm losing the ability to stay on emotional. That property has five Gary Oaks. It's a small property, so they're close together. They make a stand, which is also supposed to be protected. They range in size from twenty inches to twenty-nine inches diameter at breast height. This means that the smallest are from three hundred fifty to four hundred years old, according to W D F W. This is not me making up stuff. And the largest is from four hundred and thirty-five to five hundred and eighty years old. That's really old. These trees grow extremely slowly. They are living beings, hundreds of years older than any of us. Doesn't this mean anything to anyone anymore? The city and its council does not really seem to understand how valuable and important these oaks are. They are a keystone species. They are habitat for more than three hundred other species and the native tree that is most likely to survive climate change, but not if you let them be cut down. It's clear that those in charge still haven't really fully taken on board the information that the best available science embodied in the W D F W publications tells you that they should not be cut down, even though the city attorney repeats that it's just a recommendation. It's not just a recommendation. It's the best available science, and they're not supposed to be cut down. What has the city been doing to get this word out to people, to the developers, the property owners? The city needs to seriously rethink its approach to Gary Oak conservation here because it's it's clearly not working. These oaks are irreplaceable. Please do more. There is absolutely no time to waste. Engage in that public education that's in our municipal code. It says that you are going to engage in public education about these trees, and I don't see it happening. Exert yourselves exert yourselves to help prevent further loss of these oaks. They are our oaks, and they need help. And now I have a second one from the nonprofit, the Gary Oak Coalition, which is based in Lakewood. In about a month, it will be four years since the council decided to amend the tree code. And in November, it will be three since the new tree code was adopted. It's time to reassess the situation and to ask, is it time to amend the tree code again? Have these changes been enough? Apparently not. A few days ago, like I said, we discovered these trees had been mutilated and one had been cut down. Apparently, they're all going to be cut down, but that's not entirely clear yet. So if this was permitted, and we can't check this because the permit portal doesn't work for the public. We cannot go in and check any permits until sometime in the future in autumn. So we have to ask the city staff to give us the information, which, of course, isn't immediate like it would be in the portal. So we would like to know why was this allowed if it was allowed? What discussions took place with the developer? What incentives were offered, like you were supposed to give incentives? And how was the public education presented? How were these people convinced that they should save these trees, right? Because they're not saving them. These oaks are supposed to be protected. They are the city is supposed to abide by the best available science, which is embodied for these oaks in the W D F W management recommendations. Gary Oaks should not be cut down west of the Cascades except for stand enhancement, according to these recommendations. And they also say if they're cut down, then oaks for these sizes should have replacement ratios of up to two hundred to one. So that one tree of twenty-six inches should have two hundred new trees planted. Between eighteen and twenty-four inches, there was one that was that size, a hundred and fifty to one. So this means that you would need for those five trees, nine hundred fifty new oaks for mitigation. I want to know, we all want to know, where is this mitigation taking place? Who is going to oversee the mitigation? You know, you have to protect it in perpetuity, right? So it's not happening, and it needs to happen. Better yet, the trees need not to be cut down. What discussions took place in which the city tried everything possible, everything possible to get this developer to save these oaks? I'm afraid that nothing happened. I'm afraid he applied for a permit and was given a permit. When someone has an oak on his or a property, they must know that the oak must not be cut down. The city has to want to save these oaks, have to be proactive and resolute in both their public education, where is the public education, and interactions with developers. We cannot have development at any cost. Do we want a treeless Lakewood, our future? No water, no trees, and no life? We ask that you renew your vows to protect Lakewood's natural environment, including these Gary Oaks. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is James Dunlop, and I am a resident of Lakewood. I want to return to what I was talking about two weeks ago, and I think two weeks before that, and that was fireworks. I know it's been a month since July the fourth. And as far as I can see, as I mentioned last time, you know, there were, I believe, fifty fires in Pierce County over the over the July the fourth period. And it seems to me that the city doesn't seem to take that seriously and take seriously, you know, what the implications of that might be. You know, as far as I can see, I looked at maps, only about sort of some five or ten percent of homes in Lakewood are, for example, vulnerable from sort of wildfire risks. I'm sure you know the figures better than me. But it would only take perhaps one or two serious fires in Lakewood potentially to have a real impact on property owners because I'm hearing sort of anecdotal evidence that homeowners are suddenly finding that their insurance is contracts are being canceled. But companies no longer want to insure their their houses, and insurance companies are becoming more aware of the of fire risks. And yes, it does seem that in certain cases, people, homeowners are losing their insurance because of this. So that's, you know, I mean, I know that the city is very much interested in homeowners and supports homeowners' interests. And so it seems to me that allowing a free-for-all with fireworks in Lakewood is frivolous. And as a result of that frivolity, you know, you could see implications very soon in terms of homeowners finding it difficult to be insured. So I wanted to make that point, and I just wanted to finish off by going back to sort of what Christina Manetti was talking about. It seems to me that, you know, the Lakewood has the oak as its city tree. So that would suggest the city has some fondness for the tree. Yet it seems to have no idea about where the oaks in Lakewood are going. You know, how many oaks would you like there to be in Lakewood in, say, fifty years' time or a hundred years' time? You know, you talk about goals for urban forestry, but I think the city needs to have goals for oaks in Lakewood. And to begin with, you're going to need an inventory of oaks in Lakewood. I mean, I understand that's difficult, and existing technology, I think L E D A R technology, it is not very good at isolating oaks. And so the city needs to start to think about how many oaks are in the city and what the rate of decline has been, say, over the last twenty years, and to think about the future and to actually have goals for oaks, not just urban forest, but goals for oaks which can go, you know, I think the next fifty to a hundred years.
Hello, good evening to everyone. My name is Abraham Mirjelili. I'm a resident of Lakewood. I wanted to discuss a couple of issues with the council, one that I already did regarding the fireworks that we were just hearing about it. Well, it is, you know, I understand there was a candidate who came and angrily said, well, we do this because of the flag. Well, really, the flag and the fireworks are for the people, except that we need to be responsible to the others' right. And respective of that, we cannot just do whatever we want to do, and we say, oh, this is for this, have excuse. I really expected a candidate who want to run for this council to be more understanding and look at everybody's interest than what he likes for himself. Of course, when I look at his sign, I see it to be blue. My understanding is that usually Democrats like the blue and Republican likes the red. His sign is blue while he's running as a Republican candidate. Well, I personally look at that very deceptive. I am very disappointed. That's one thing. The other one is that there is an island in the Lake Estelcom that it is very small. It has some bushes in there, and there were some wildlife that they were taking refuge in there and running away from predators. Suddenly, I saw it, not this weekend, last weekend, that is cleared out. I don't know who did it, if it was the city, was private person, whatever. But I would appreciate if the council would look into it to see who did that because, you know, that was a refugee for the birds and, you know, wildlife. And 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 I have seen him that they run away from predators in there. Of course, if the city has done it, I would be very disappointed because I heard also from the city resident that the city doesn't care to take care of Edgewater Park. That was just a couple of weeks ago, last month when they were talking about it. If the city has cleared that and cannot clean the parks, I will be very disappointed. Thank you very much.
Anyone else here in the audience wish to provide public comment tonight? Seeing them, we'll turn to those who may be appearing via Zoom. Madam Clerk. We have a hand raised, Mr. Haugen. Mr. Haugen, just a reminder to keep it pertaining to city business, if you will, please. We having a problem with mute? Okay, we'll go to Ms. Underwood.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, now we can hear you.
Okay.
Hopefully, you heard me.
Yes.
Keep your comments pertaining to city business, please.
Right, right.
Great.
Much of your city business is controlled by your state, limiting what you can do that you need to do with the schools and with the police department. They've got their thumb over you. My opinion, there needs to be some firing going on. But that'll take a little time, but it's going to take time. Now, one of the things that, and I have looked through YouTube lately to see what kind of confrontations you've had with ICE, which is a law enforcement officer, law enforcement department. And they have prohibited any cooperation from your police when it makes the job easier, such as just letting criminals go because when they're illegal immigrants. You know, take them into court, not calling ICE. Look, if you call ICE, it's cheaper, you know, and it costs you less money. That affects your city when you have these rules coming down from the city, from the state. And a lot of these rules are just laughable. I can't find, I can talk to people all over the place, and they're coming out of your communities. They're coming even to a place in South Dakota where we have a winter, you know? Washington Cars coming. I've even met people from Lakewood, you know? Why did you leave? Well, it really boils down to your state government and the thumb that they have over you for all kinds of ridiculous stuff. D E I, C R S T, your schools prohibiting your police from doing their job. If a criminal is a criminal, a criminal is a criminal, and it should do the same whether they're illegal immigrants or not. And when they get to court, if they're in jail, then let them go to ICE. You don't need to keep them in the in the community for the taxpayers of Lakewood and every other city to pay. So a lot of your problems are because you're under the state's thumb. And that means you need to think about, in my opinion, you need to think about firing a few people. Thank you.
Next, we have Kim Underwood.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to speak a little bit about the Clover Creek Flood Mitigation or basically the flood plan for Lakewood. I am a forty-five-year resident of Lakewood. I live on Clover Creek. I'm also a an executive member of the Chambers Clover Creek Watershed Council, although I'm not speaking on behalf of them. I'm speaking as a Lakewood resident. I'm a little perplexed that we are revisiting this levy issue that the city is going to spend several thousand dollars for yet another flood study with our one percent chance of flooding here in Lakewood. The, my house is a hundred and ten years old. And I'm thank the Lord every day that it hasn't flooded, but a hundred and ten years old, and many residents along Clover Creek are older. We have never seen Clover Creek leave its banks. The bottom line here is that the city wants to develop the Springbrook area. The Springbrook area is a federally mapped surface water recharge area. Now, our water issues, I remember going into great detail with Mr. Bucic about this several times, and I'd be more than happy. Three minutes is not enough to really have this conversation. I'd love to have an hour of somebody's time to sit down and show you the maps, show you the FEMA maps, show you the discussions that I've had with FEMA, how they do not map groundwater. They only map surface water. Our surface water issues, if we were to have any at all, come from upstream. If you're going to spend any money at all on a study, I would encourage you to work alongside of Pierce County as well as our Lakewood Water District. Lakewood Water sells our water to thirteen purveyors upstream because they have exhausted their water, right? They don't have water. We are blessed, but our streams are dry. There are houses for sale along Clover Creek because the canary grass, the cottonwood trees, everything has grown up because we don't have water in it six, seven months of the year now. It's basically a Roman candle waiting to go up with very difficult access from the fire department because we do not have water. So I encourage you to rethink this allocation of of money.
Thank you. Next individual is Polly.
Hello, this is Polly McLean and Jody Polarsky. We did send in a letter earlier, which I heard acknowledged that you received. I appreciate that. And I wanted to ask about, since the vote to consider the plans for Edgewater Park being a neighborhood park versus a city park, we hadn't seen any mention of the park until recently when we saw that there was an authorization of this execution of an agreement on the agenda for this evening. Is this the appropriate time to address this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We we have some concerns just regarding, it doesn't look like this new plan would go into effect until June of two thousand and twenty-nine. And in the meantime, the condition of the park is deteriorated. And my concern this evening is to ask the council to address the current state of Edgewater Park. And the park is being used with no parameters. There's no signage indicating that this is an official park, that there are park rules, as I've seen in other parks in Lakewood. I, one item that I thought of after I sent the letter is that there's no signs posted that there's not a lifeguard on duty and to swim at your own risk. There's a lot of children in the water and supervised or not. And so that was a great concern. Also, I I addressed some of the I, I addressed some of the issues in the letter. I didn't want to take a lot of time, but there's concerns regarding, there's no signage that, with the name of the park, with the park hours, the opening and closing times. There's no mention of no alcoholic beverages, no weapons, no littering, that pets must be on a leash, that animal waste must be removed by the owner. And there's no adherence to designated parking, to solicitation of any kind. There's no smoking within 50 feet of area, activity areas, and that's listed on other park rules. And we're, we're just concerned about, the, the park appears to be currently out of control, which I would consider a liability for the city of Lakewood. And I highlighted some of the other issues in the area, but I, I, there needs to be, I, I would hope that there's room for attention between now and when this agreement with the developers goes into effect. And the, the amounts are the same. The, the initial park proposal was eight million for a city park, and now it's eight millions for a neighborhood park. Just wondering what the difference was. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. At some point tonight, we'll have Mr. Williams address that, city versus neighborhood park issue and
Thank you.
the maintenance issues as well, when it comes before us.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last individual that I saw. Madam Clerk with a hand raised to address the council during the public comment period. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll declare the public comment period closed.
It says first mom.
We'll now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, if you'd read those items, please.
A, approval of minutes of the city council meeting of July 21st, 2025. B, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $4,447,963.34 for the period of June 15th, 2025 through July 15th, 2025. C, approval of paychecks in the amount of $3,776,473.17 for the period of June 16th, 2025 through July 15th, 2025. D, motion number 2025-49, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Keller Associates for the Clover Creek flood plan mitigation. E, motion number 2025-50, authorizing the execution on an extentum to the agreement with the Aqua Texnecks for the 2025 American Lake Management Mill Oil Treatment. F, motion number 2025-51, authorizing the execution of an agreement with PND Engineers for the Edgewater Park Development Project. G, motion number 2025-52, authorizing the execution of an agreement between the city of Lakewood and John Unfred, prescribing the terms of separation from employment with the city of Lakewood. H, motion number 2025-53.
How can I get my name changed?
Dotson and Camry Wilson on the Public Safety Advisory Committee through August 20, August 6th, 2028. I, motion number 2025-54, appointing the 2025 through 2026 youth council members. J, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, planning commission meetings minutes of May 7th, 2025. Two, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of May 24th, 2025. Three, planning commission meeting minutes of June 18th, 2025, and planning meeting minutes of July 2nd, 2025.
Thank you very much. Is there any item which any council member wishes to remove from consent agenda consideration at this time? Councilmember Branstadter.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item D,
which is motion 2025-49, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Keller Associates for the Clover Creek flood plane mitigation. Any other items which any council member wishes to remove from consent agenda consideration at this time? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda minus item D?
So moved?
Second. Been moved by councilmember Pearson, second by councilmember Bokey, that we adopt the consent agenda minus item D. Any discussion? Well, I want to, I'm, I'm going to comment a little bit on an item on the consent agenda, and that's the item G, just very briefly, because I think there was a commenter, including Mr. Brown, that commented on the issue of this settlement agreement that's before council tonight. Just want to say a couple of things. Matters pending litigation often come before a city like Lakewood. And the details are provided, often in executive session, the details of which council members are not privy to discuss. In a matter like this, there was no litigation filed, so there's no public record of the claims and, and issues involved in litigation, which can be frustrating to the public. Resolutions are not unusual in city government. And resolutions exist to resolve fully, fairly, and faithfully as best can be had disputed interests and claims. And council often takes these up and makes decisions that council believes as a body are in the best interests of the city. And that's my understanding why this is before us tonight. So, any further thoughts or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda minus item D signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda minus item D has been adopted. We now turn to item D, motion number 2025-49. Do we have a motion? To adopt motion 2025-49, at least for discussion purposes? It's been moved by councilmember Pearson, seconded by councilmember Bell. And we adopt motion 2025-49. Discussion. Mr. Branstadter?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That, this relates to some ongoing discussions that we've had for coming up on three years of when we had a problem with FEMA's initial assessment of the flood plain, and then, and then we looked at alternatives. And we've been moving incrementally towards a, a solution to be able to, to, to do that. I think I'm, uh, this, this contract for someone to look at this and do some design work for a levy, I think is an appropriate next step, but I am concerned that any further steps are really going to take commitment from other partners. And I was, wanted to inquire of city staff about what kind of commitments has the state, Pierce County, the Corps of Engineers, JBLM, others made that if we move forward with this contract and get to a, a level of design that we're going to move on, because this is the last step that the city by itself can afford. Anything beyond this is going to take a, a good bit of money going forward. And it isn't even the most important flood control issue that we're a party to, because the Nisqually Reach is actually an even more significant flooding issue where we've been advocating and, and trying to help with the, the, arrange funding for that. So I'm, I'm concerned, are we still in this alone?
Good evening, Councilman Branstadter.
Oh, very good. Welcome, Mr. Remack, to the party.
Thank you. Right now, what we're looking at with the 30% design is, yes, we are in it alone currently. The idea with the 30% design, though, is to have more context and more background, as well as the study, to be able to draw in WAS dot JBLM, as well as Pierce County. Right now, the standard that people typically look at is the 100-year flood plain. And so when we looked at that design originally, the, the rest of the jurisdictions looked at it and said, nope, we're good with that. We're not, we're not concerned with it. We had a concern at Lakewood, so we did an additional study to get, in terms of some modeling that was done. And we saw, okay, it is a larger impact than where we are. We've shared that information, and they said, yeah, we're not sure that's enough really for where we're at. And they focused on the Nisqually and things like that, like you've spoken to. So what we're looking at right here is further feasibility, geotechnical studies, and a potential 30% design look at, really to be able to go have that better conversation and say, okay, we've done the initial footwork that we need to do to show that this is an issue. You need to now participate. Without it, we, I don't think we'll move forward at all until there's an event that occurs and someone goes, oh, no, there's an issue. Now we need to look at it, but it'll be after the flood has already occurred. So this is the next step in being able to draw in the partners and where we're at.
And I understand it's the next step, and I even understand that the city's residents are paying every year into the flood control zone district. And there is a, a provision in that agency that a certain percentage of the money that is, comes from city residents is reserved back to the city to deal with, with flood and watershed issues. So that the majority of the cost of this is money that, there's very little else we could spend on. But I, I, I guess the, 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 the question is, for the step after this, how certain are we about what kind of a timeline we'd be looking at to be able to, 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 to move on to a next step? Given that the next step has to include money from partners who, you know, you know, the state and the county are both hemorrhaging money, that, you know, that, that, that they're not going to go to do this. And if it came right down to it, if the state asked us, do you prefer for us to provide more robust funding for the Nisqually Reach or for, or for this? You know, my, my personal thought would be the Nisqually Reach, just, just regionally, and that is a much more significant ecological, environmental problem, and actually has, is great or, or of a problem with interrupting I-5 as, as this. So, I guess, in, in, in your best interests, other than just applying hope, what do you, how long do you think it's going to take? And how heavy a lift is it going to be to move from completing this design to actually getting partners involved that it will help us to actually do it?
I'm going to answer the best I can, because I can't give you a predictable timeline to that. What I can speak to is that without the 30% design to give more definitive responses, there will not be partnership from the other entities in what we're looking at, because we've already discussed what we have to date. And they've said, thank you, but no thank you. There needs to be further study, or you would have to come with more. If we don't move forward, they're not going to participate until an event occurs. At that point, they'll recognize and say, okay, we need to engage. But that would probably be a little late. So given the cost of what we're looking at, this is a step towards trying to get more engagement and buy-in and people to understand what the danger really is.
Yeah, I understand you're, that, that some of the funders who would have to be major players have a history of not investing until after events occurred. Chehalis being an example in the I-5 corridor and, and, and things to do that. But let me ask you, in the, in the request for council action under alternatives, it said that the, the do-nothing alternative would document the modeled flooding extents through a letter of map revision with FEMA. Are we talking about a do-nothing, meaning not authorizing this contract? Well, what is, what is, what is the, the, the do-nothing option that's being referred to in that sentence?
It, it essentially would be not authorizing this contract and not moving forward with any version of a study. 30% is basically, that's a feasibility study when it comes to a plan like this and really what you're looking at. It does require engineering, geotechnical basin design, things of that, to do some modeling, to really be able to have a conversation about what is the extent? And now what will the design for treatment of that be? If we don't do this step in what we're looking at, which is that modeling and the feasibility, then there really isn't a next step to take. This is the next step in terms of project.
Okay, so, 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 so this says, this implies, I guess, because I'm not quite sure if it actually says this, that if we don't do this contract, then there would be a letter of map revision with FEMA. I, I guess I thought we already identified the problem, so I thought that we were already working with FEMA to get them to revise their maps. And, and would that not occur whether we do this or, or not, based on the previous information we have?
The only way we would be able to revise the map would be requests of map revision. And we would have to turn in our data and say, no, we need to show a larger flood hazard area. That would be the result. Right now, what we're looking at is we have the information, and we're moving forward to validate that that's accurate. And then to actually take in a more in-depth study, really, to look at it and the path forward. There is the option for the city.
Why haven't we notified FEMA that the map should be revised?
Because actively, we're working for the solution on what we do going forward. Revising the map would then impact the people who live in the basin as well when it comes to their flood insurance, if you revise that map.
So are we in a situation of where we have an opinion, based on our studies, about where the flood plain is? And that, but we haven't officially notified FEMA or officially requested that they make a change to their maps, because it's their maps that are relevant. And that if we do do this study, then after this study, will we, will, is that when we will ask FEMA to do a map change?
We would look to solidify what we've already had done, to make sure that it's accurate. And then, yes, there would be a map change. And then, but FEMA needs to agree with your map change when you look at it. So the reality is, it's not just we ask them and they change it. So what we did previously, I don't know that that's enough for FEMA to move the map. We could move it, we could show, but we can know that the other jurisdictions have already looked at what we already collected and said, it's not enough for us to move.
Well, I, I know, you know, I do recall that when the last FEMA revision of maps came out, the city of Lakewood disagreed with it because we thought that their maps were showing too large of a flood plain. And so we did some work and some studies, and lo and behold, the flood plain was even larger than what FEMA was predicting. And so I, I guess the, are, are we in a situation of we're delaying asking FEMA to adjust the map? Because of the, the additional properties that would then get into a requirement with a, a change, or, 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 or do, or do we still have some uncertainty about the danger?
There is some uncertainty when we look at it. We've recognized in what we saw in the initial mapping, but that was initial mapping. The next step is to move forward to the 30%, to be able to truly have definitive information on what we do and how we move forward. That's also how we ask. That's also how we ask for assistance from the other jurisdictions.
Okay, and then I, I have one last question that is less serious than what I have, but just for an understanding in, in the, in the scope of work on the draft agreement. Uh, it, it talks about, um, that, uh, that, that, that the, the, the area of concern is, uh, you know, Clover Creek from essentially from the lake to the, the cord Burlington Northern tracks. And then it says the upper third is the primary area of focus. And then there's a map. And the map shows the route of the creek that runs from uh, southeast to northwest. And so I am just asking to make sure that I understand what, what upper third means. Um, you know, I could look at this map and look at the, 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 i- i- is, is it the, is it the upper third up in the northwest section, or is it the, actually the southeast section, but that, that's a upper in terms of the, the creek flow?
Correct. It's the southeast corner. That is the upstream for the creek and where the flows would then travel down through Clover.
Okay, uh, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Lorisella, then Bokey, and then I have a question, I think, too.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, uh, Mr. Remack. Uh, and thank you, Mr. Branstadter, for taking this off the consent agenda for discussion. Uh, I had questions kind of in the same line as, as Mr. Branstadter's. So we've come forward with this a couple of times. Uh, there were studies done in the past that showed where theoretically the, the floodplain has changed through the years. But to this point, JBLM and WashDOT have not been willing participants in terms of funding the studies or, uh, really moving forward with this, correct?
It, it has not been their focus. There are other things that are more focused on, like Nisqually.
Right, and they are, I believe they have the highest value assets that would be impacted by this if we were to have a hundred-year flood, right? Uh, theoretically, it would go over I five and have a huge economic impact on the state and all that, right?
Correct.
So from my perspective, if they're not willing to come to the table to this point, why would we believe that giving them the same information again brings them to the table?
So my understanding of the previous that was done and when we asked about it, um, is that it was just a mapping exercise only. There wasn't any boots-on-ground time that was really done. It was LIDAR and isopluvial rainfall totals that came in that went into the map. It was not an in-depth mapping exercise like you would do for a thirty percent feasibility or design to really have more resolute data and to move that forward. Also, at the same time, when we had the conversation, when we look at it, we said, well, we believe this would be the idea and it would be a levy. And we believe the levy would be this much. And that's one of the potentials that we look at. But without any better, actually interest, investigation into design, you're not really going to know what your final outcome is. So that is one of the feasibilities here is are there other alternatives? The feasibility of even looking at doing the levy and what the possibilities would be. So that's probably the, the big one when we look at it. And then the full modeling that would go with that after we've done the LIDAR studies as well as some of the survey.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I feel like until we can get them to come to the table, that it's not the best use of the city's funds to move forward with this. Thank you.
Mr. Bokey? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I do want to state rather than ask any questions or maybe I do have a question, so hang on, but, um, I think the idea of us getting thirty million dollars to build a levy and then, and then actually let people still live inside the levy is a little much, right? I mean, we ask initial questions about, well, there's already at least one street that will go through this levy, right? So how, how do we protect the levy? So, so there's all sorts of things to it. I think what we're going to find, and I'm, and I'm okay with going forward on this, this uses flood control zone district money. It does use some, some city surface water management funds to begin that process because you, you, you do setback levies. Um, I, I see this at the county, they do setback levies, but they also purchase the properties inside. What they found is purchasing the properties inside before you do the setback levies is a more efficient way to do this. You don't continue to let people live in the floodplain. So the first thing you do is you buy out the properties within the floodplain and then you try to set the levy up. It, it then, it then reduces the impact of any flooding. So I, I, I think we need a multi-pronged approach to this. I think up till now, staff is doing exactly what we've told them to do on the first blush, which is charged forward with trying to get the money for a, a setback levy. The properties within where that setback, where that levy is supposed to go are not worth thirty million dollars. So we've got to ask some questions here as to what we're trying to do. And again, that's thirty million dollars three years ago, so it's forty, forty-five million today as we sit. So what, I, I mean, we, we really do, at some point, we're going to need to ask ourselves, what's the cost benefit analysis here? And what's the best way to proceed forward on, on, um, on protecting this, the roads and various things like that? But, you know, first things first, that is what I would say. We need to have a more robust debate. After we receive this, we're going to have to have a more robust debate at some point about what do we do with the properties inside where the levy is supposed to go? Thank you.
I, I have a comment and then a question, Mr. Remack. I'm, I'm a little bit with Councilmember Lorisella. I'm not sure that spending the money is going to get us too far down the path of doing much. We'll get some thirty percent design criteria and that'll maybe help and inform future decisions. But we're talking about a one percent chance of a hundred-year event. I think there's probably less chance of getting the actual money over the next hundred years to do anything with the levy after it's studied. Um, that's my humble opinion. And so my question to you, Mr. Remack, is assuming we didn't pursue this and given some of the public comment we've received, you know, not just tonight, but in the past year or two, are there better ways to invest some money to study what's going on with the, you know, the, the floodplain and the Clover Park, Clover Park, Clover Creek reach, if you will, because it does seem awfully dry, uh, a number of months in a year, which makes one scratch their head about, again, the real possibility of any sort of flooding from Clover Creek, which is dry six to eight months a year. Are we throwing money down a rat hole? Just to say we did?
Uh, I think that's kind of hard to say. I'll be, here's why I say that. There's been a change in what we've seen in total rainfall over the last couple of years, bringing in other lake measurements that we have throughout. We know that rainfall totals have not been the same as what they used to have been. At the same time, Clover Creek, the water is not all generated at the head that we look at in Lakewood. It comes from upstream. So without a study to understand what the upstream basin is and what the contributing factors are to Clover Creek as to why it's going away. And there are multiple things that there can be. Interflow is like flow that travels underground in a horizontal pathway, doesn't go down back into the aquifer, it just travels along a layer and then will pop up somewhere. What's impacting the low water levels? That's a completely different type of study that you could be looking at.
And this study doesn't address that whatsoever, right?
So this will address some of the upstream basin and what we're looking at because of that mapping. So it will going to say what contributes to this basin and where is it at? But it's not asking the question, where has the water gone? Which is like one of the questions that I've heard from multiple avenues, not just for here, but from other venues we've been at where people say, why is the lake level where it's at? Um, some of it could be, you know, global warming, weather, how much rain we have, greater land uses, a true study on where that is.
Might that study have more utility for the residents of Lakewood? Who, at least around Stillcom Lake and perhaps some of the others, uh, rely on that flow from both Clover Creek and Ponce de Leon for, you know, the health, safety and welfare of not just the residents that utilize the water. And we've bought and spent a ton of money on access to lakefront property. And if there's nothing that flows down to create lakefront property to access, what are we doing?
So yes, you could use the money to look at other contributing or tributaries that flow into some of the lakes. But some of those, at the same time, when you look at them, are not going to be that it's lack of tributary water feeding to it. Um, you could go look at like American Lake and when they look at it, it's a closed depression is really what we look at with that.
That one is, yeah.
So that is, if that's the, the series and what we're looking at, then there's questions, okay, what really drives that? You know, why is that? What has changed? What in the substrate has changed? Is more water being used? We've heard that people brought it up today when they spoke to it about what the water district is doing and how they pump water out, where they go. The study could have wide-ranging effects as to what you really want to look at, but it comes down to what is the city's goal and what they want to know? Because we will have to narrow the focus. There's not one that is going to go ahead and say,
Right.
this is where all the water is going, this is where the water went. Why do we not have more water? Things of that nature. Typically, what we would look at with this model would be, what is the upstream contributing basins? What are the historical rainfall totals that have come? How much of that water makes it all the way down into this basin? And what does that mean for the flood elevations within the basin?
Maybe what we need to do to remediate and enhance the surface water flow, right?
Correct.
For the basin, because something's stopping it, bottling it up, impeding it, whatever.
Well, and there's
The study won't address.
And that's true. There are things that can happen upstream that we're not in control of. We look at the Washington State Department of Ecology Stormwater Manual. It requires that most places go ahead and look at going infiltrating water. So if you had large overland water that was traveling through a basin before, they replace it with impervious area. Now that water is being captured because the state says you must capture that water and we put it into the ground. Okay, well, it's going into the ground. Is it going into a different aquifer recharge area now because it was heated where it was? There are a lot of different things that can occur
Yeah.
with water as it travels. And it can be an in-depth study to find out.
An in-depth study that this one doesn't yet address, right? So it's a matter of priorities or competing priorities. Okay, very good, Mr. Branstadter.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and other councilmen, I appreciate the, the discussion. I think that, that, you know, we, we always have projects that we're thinking might be a good idea that we study and that we look. And of course, when we do design work and things, and then we always have the caveat, but then all the estimates are in current year dollars and it, it, it's going to, going to move forward. And, um, I am somewhat in agreement with Councilmember Lorisella. The, the, the most significant impacts of a hundred-year event in Clover Park are actually not to the city of Lakewood because they're, 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 they're regional. Okay, they're going to be able to go and do that. And while I don't, I think that there are many issues that the city should take a leadership role in trying to help resolve problems like we're doing with housing and opioid abuse and we, we, and, and homelessness and, 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 and things. But you know, you know, to, to to be the sole agency that sees a problem. Uh, it, you know, we, 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 you know, we're, we're, we're pushed, we're like that, the, the Greek guy pushing the boulder up the hill to be able to go and do that. And I agree with Mr. Bokey that, uh, if we really think we've got a real problem to do that, maybe we're, we're, we're better spent trying to, one, buy up some of the properties that we think are seriously at risk. Okay, and turn them into some sort of public asset, whether it be recreational or, or, or whatever. Um, that, um, um, and you, and that's really been a strategy that has worked well in other jurisdictions that have been worried about flooding. But they usually are places that have real history of flooding. I've lived in Lakewood for thirty thirty-three years. And I recall one instance of something more than twenty years ago of where Clover Creek actually flooded and there was a one apartment complex that had, uh, serious, serious problems with that. And then, and in most recent years, the, the, the biggest concern that I get from the public is not flooding, but there is no water, okay? To be able to go, go and do that. And, and there are a myriad of, of, of explanations for doing that, including that the, the creek is in the wrong place. It should, it should be where it was, where it's supposed to be. And we, you know, and so, so, so we've got a, a, a Los Angeles model channel to divert the water to where, to where it goes. So and I'm, I, I'm seeing us that if we do this study, we'll get a number. Okay, and, and we'll get a study that says you can do this if you want to. And this is what it will cost and this is what you've got to do. And if the contract talks about, uh, you, you would, you would, they would assist us with getting permitting and, and, and things like that. But we, we, we would be, even after the end of this contract, we would be a long ways from really being able to permit anything where we can't, can't afford to do that. And we have infrastructure um, needs and, and issues that we, as a city, that we need our staff to really be focused on. We, uh, actually have done a pretty good job on infrastructure, whether it be roads or, or working on streetlights or, or the infrastructure for parks, being able to go and do that. And it, it's not so much the dollars, but the staff time to then deal with what the study results, um, seems to be not would not be well, be, 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 be energy well, well-spent to be able to go and do that. Uh, and I guess that I am sort of saying, okay, you know, let's tell them what we think, okay? And, and, and at FEMA and the, the state of Washington and, and, and JBLM and with, with, with our information. But, um, if they're not at the table yet, then, well, then we go back to the model of, well, when something happens, then, 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 then they'll get a sense of urgency. And, and that, that I don't think we can give them on this particular project. And I really even, even prioritize the Nisqually Reach project above this project, even though this one is in, in, in the city of Lakewood, because I, I, I think there is, uh, lots and lots of value to the Nisqually Reach project.
Got it.
So I, I, I'm going to vote against approving the contract.
Great.
Okay, um, not that I don't think that the contractor is qualified, not, not that I don't think we can do that. But I think that we're, uh, it's an idea that is a, is pie in the sky for us.
Thank you. Any other comments? Oh, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm, I am in favor of approving the contract. I think this kind of provides some finality. I think this is like the last kind of thing to get us to a point where we can get new, um, flood maps, you know, with whatever data shows. You know, it, it sounds like what we have right now, um, there may be parcels that are not in whatever the map is right now that were, is being used, the FEMA map. And you wouldn't get any sort of, you know, contributions from Pierce County Flood District or anything for buying up and doing setback levies without better data that they would support and FEMA supports. And so, um, you know, I don't think we're going to end up with the, the forty, fifty million dollar levy project that probably just, you know, as Mr. Bokey said, that, you know, those properties in there probably just don't even warrant that. But there's other things that, you know, little bites of the apple that you can take along the way and, and, you know, kind of do some of these flood, you know, controls district where you buy out the parcels that are in, they're potentially impacted. And, you know, you, you bite off little pieces at a time and, and over time, you know, yeah, those become parks or what are open spaces, whatever it is, so. Um, but I do think that this provides some finality to that and, um, at least gets us to a point where we know what we have. And, um, you know, we can kind of cross the next bridge when we get there, so.
Thank you. Last question, Mr. Remack, on the, the utilization of the flood control district funds and the swim funds. Could those funds be utilized, for example, uh, for purposes of the Edgewater Park development? for purposes of the Edgewater Park development? Certainly, swim funds can be used in part, right?
There would be some funds potentially that could be used, but I don't, without knowing the specifics of what we're looking at and the caveats around that.
Okay.
There's always there's a percentage that goes in.
All right, very good. Any further discussion on this? Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just add that I know JBLM have not come to the table, but we need to keep in mind they get new leadership every two years. So let's not give up and maybe find a person that will help us to accomplish this.
Any other? Thank you. Any other comments? I'll just put it out there that I'm probably going to vote against motion twenty twenty-five dash forty-nine. I just think we can utilize the money differently and perhaps on a project of more immediate priority is my opinion. Okay, all those in favor of motion twenty twenty-five dash four-nine signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Let me do a quick roll call because I'm not exactly sure. Ms. Clerk.
Councilmember Bell?
Nay.
Councilmember Boki?
Aye.
Councilmember Brandstetter?
Nay.
Councilmember Laura Sala?
Nay.
Councilmember Pearson?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Moss?
Aye.
And Mayor Waylon?
Nay.
Motion twenty twenty-five dash four-nine fails. We now turn to the regular agenda. First item is public hearings and appeals. This is the date set for the public hearing on the twenty twenty-five annual development regulation amendments. And for an overview in advance of receiving public testimony, we have our Planning Division Manager, Ms. Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tiffany Spear with the Planning and Public Works Department. So there was a study session held several weeks ago on the sixteen total amendments that are part of the annual development regulation package. They affect a number of titles of the Lakewood Municipal Code, which are listed in the middle of the slide there, one, two, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, and then eighteen, A, B, and C. These are all based on the Planning Commission's recommendations from their resolution twenty twenty-five oh three. And these are a wide variety of types of amendments. So it's everything from truly a technical spelling change or addition of a of a change in state law definition to some more substantive topics, all of which were covered at the July twenty-first, or excuse me, July sixteenth study session. This is just the list of the sixteen amendments. I'm not going to go through them in great detail unless you would like to ask questions on specific ones because they were covered at the study session. But there were a couple of questions asked at that meeting that I provided information about, starting on page one eighty-two of your meeting packet for this evening. First of all, Amendment Three is nothing more than correcting names of streets. And there is a separate ongoing legislative update for the full Title Twelve, which is the Public Works Lakewood Municipal Code Chapter, accompanied with an update to the Engineering Services Manual. That will be coming to you as counsel in early twenty twenty-six. Amendment fourteen is the one that would allow the installation of used manufactured homes in manufactured and mobile home parks. This is also changed now tonight, based on the conversation had July twenty-first, to show explicitly that any such home put into the city of Lakewood would have to be inspected through the city's rental housing safety program before it could be occupied. On Amendment sixteen, there was conversation regarding the change to allow iconic signs. And those are defined in the proposed code as well as explained about what criteria, there's a total of fifteen, an iconic sign would have to satisfy before they would be allowed within city, in the city. What you have here on the slide, again, I'm not going to read this in verbatim detail, but there's several Supreme Court and then Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals cases related to the signed code. And based on an on review of those cases and other research that's been done by other municipalities in our region, the way this has been prepared and provided to you for adoption, we feel is compliant with the signed code case law. So unless you have any other specific questions ready for the public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Spear. Any specific questions of Ms. Spear? Mr. Brandstetter.
Ms. Spear, could you just clarify the, and I understand the thing regarding the manufactured homes and would have to be inspected through the city's rental housing safety program?
Correct.
Okay. But how would we apply that to someone who plans to put such a home in a site and be the owner occupier?
They would still be required to have the hookup permits. So there would be an inspection by the city just to allow it to be placed there regardless. And then there would be that second layer of a rental housing safety program inspection. So the city would be aware of anything that was put on site because there would have to be hookup to water, sewer, and electricity as well.
Is that because the site is being rented? Because the home wouldn't be being rented, in all cases.
Correct. But if you were to put a manufactured home down, it's not going to be operational as a home unless it is hooked into utilities. And so that's kind of the trigger for the the city to get involved and then also add the rental housing safety program requirement.
Okay, and if we approve this, then will we then in twenty twenty-six need to make some amendments to language in the rental housing safety program policy to be able to 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 to
We can
Give staff the guidance, say you need to how to deal with this.
Well, this will be explicit language within the code right now, if this were to be adopted, to say that that would apply to these types of homes. But we can also review whether additional edits would be appropriate in the rental housing safety program.
Okay, and then I I just had a question about Amendment Amendment eleven, which is the required record of survey for short subdivisions. And you mentioned that there were in this, in this menu of of changes, there were some that were just small administrative adjustments and things to do that and and others were more substantial. Is what is this? Is this, is this, is this, is this, is this a minor technicality adjustment? Because when I read it, it didn't look like it was really changing anything that that we do now, other than it's saying that we have to do what we do now.
Basically, yes.
Is that, is that right?
It's codifying practice. Yeah.
Yeah, codifying practice. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And again, it's fine to ask clarifying questions of Ms. Spear with her overview because members of the public in advance of their testimony may have had a similar question. So this is the time for the public hearing on the twenty twenty-five annual development regulation amendments. Public testimony is accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Written comments may be submitted in advance to our city clerk, Brianna Schumacher, at six thousand Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, Washington, or via email at B Schumacher at cityoflakewood.us. Testimony received after an hour before the meeting has been provided to the council electronically. The clerk will read the names of those who have submitted testimony for this public hearing in advance, if any.
There were no public comments.
Thank you very much. Testimony, if you are here to provide testimony on the twenty twenty-five annual development regulation amendments is limited to three minutes per person. Please step up to the podium and state your name and address of record, such as Mary Moss, Lakewood, Washington, and you'll be receiving your three minutes to speak. Virtual testimony is also also authorized. If you'd like to provide live virtual testimony, please join the Zoom meeting by dialing the telephone number two five three two one five eight seven eight two, enter the meeting ID number eight six eight seven two six three two three seven three. And upon entering the room, the clerk will call on you using your raise the hand feature or once you use the raise the hand feature. So I have no individuals who have signed in on the public comment comment sheet to provide testimony during this public hearing. But if there's anybody in the audience who would like to do that, notwithstanding the sign-in sheet, please feel free to do so. Seeing none, I'll turn to those who may be appearing virtually to provide public testimony for this particular public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any individuals?
There is one individual, but it might be from previously during public comments. It's Dennis Hoggan.
Okay, Mr. Hoggan, I will remind you, unless you are addressing the twenty twenty-five annual development regulation amendments and providing public testimony on that specific matter, I would ask you not to make public testimony. If you have public testimony on this, you're more than happy and feel free to do so.
Dennis Hoggan, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I can definitely deal with what's going to apply to you.
No, I I need testimony, sir, on the twenty twenty-five annual development regulation amendments.
I saw it. I saw it. I saw one of the problems right there. There's an infinite number of people that want to come into this country, including the states that are sanctuary states, which are a little easier.
Mr. Hoggan, that has nothing to do with the topic at hand.
It does.
Uh, no.
These people fall in. Watch what happens.
Thank you very much. Enjoy Sioux Falls. Madam Clerk, are there any others with their virtual hands raised to provide public testimony on topic on the twenty twenty-five annual development regulation amendments?
There is not, Mayor.
Very good. I'll declare the public hearing closed. We'll now turn to resolutions. First resolution, Madam Clerk.
Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twelve, conditionally approving the Springbrook Annex Apartments Phase Two Eight-Year Multifamily Tax Exemption continued from July twenty-first of twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. And I believe Ms. Mr. Remack does not appear to be Ms. Newton, but you are likely here in her stead.
Ms. Ms. Newton is on leave, on vacation. Bring bring before you Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve for the MFTE for Springbrook Two. It's an eight-year MFTE that is being proposed. The project is located within the Springbrook residential target area, which allows for eight or twelve year. They have chosen the eight. The proposed project meets all the requirements defined in the Lakewood Municipal Code. Project is not required to have any affordable units as it's chosen the eight year. The project adds seventy-six total housing units with ninety parking stalls. The client has already signed the agreement regarding RTA development. Recommendation for approval.
Very good. And just remind all of us the reason why we continued this from the last time it was on the agenda.
Yes, it was to correct the information that was shared. It had been confused with Alliance and we wanted to clarify for the public so they had opportunity to review.
Very good. Thank you. Any brief questions of Mr. Remack standing in for Ms. Newton, Mr. Laura Sella?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I last week when we talked about this, I also agreed with postponing it in hopes that we would reach out to the residents of Springbrook and Springbrook Neighborhood Association to get their feedback. As I understand it, that didn't occur in the last week. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brandstetter, a question of Mr. Remack before we get a motion on the floor for discussion.
Yeah, well, Mr. Remack, I want to thank you for just cleaning up the 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 language in it so that it's 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 clear both to to console and anyone else who sees the the packet being able to go go forward and 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 doing that. So I think you know, it's sort of resolved the issues that led to our asking to continue it to today, particularly since the last time it was caused some confusion with another item that was on the that agenda.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Remack? Otherwise, I'll call the question. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve? Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
Second. Been moved by Councilmember Pearson, seconded by Councilmember Boki, that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve. Any further discussion? Mr. Boki?
I think this is a good project. I'm glad. Thank you, staff, for fixing all that information. It is awfully close to the creek to our prior discussion, but it is on the high side. So and I and I trust that it will be, it looks like a very good project and the kind of project we've been looking for. Multi-story, not not just the the three-story Woody walk-up. And I think it is basically the same area as the previous Springbrook project. And which I believe has turned out very well and fairly adjacent to the park. So I think all around, this is, this is going to be a good deal for the city of Lakewood. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Laura Sella.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Mr. Boki. This looks like a really good project. We need housing. We need housing for JBLM soldiers who are in the region. I think that's really important. But we also need feedback from the people for whom this is going to be in their neighborhood. And because of that, I'd like to see us postpone this until we actually reach out to the Springbrook Neighborhood Association to get their their input. I don't want to delay it too long. Hopefully, we can talk to Jesse Black and the the folks over there in charge of that to get their feedback in the near term. But as it stands right now, I wouldn't vote to approve this. Thank you.
Okay. Are you asking, are you asking to amend the motion to continue it to a date certain for consideration, or are you just advising that you wouldn't elect to vote yea on this at this time?
So at at the risk of being a witness led by an attorney, yes, I would move that we amend this to, because at a later time, in in the phrase that you had.
Continue to date certain, which would be August eighteen?
If city staff believes they can reach out to the Springbrook Neighborhood Association by that time.
First of all, I I get the conditional nature of your motion, but parliamentarian, is that the correct motion?
Yes, you can set something over to a date certain, and I think it is appropriate to check with the department in question as to whether or not they can be ready by that date.
We we can notify and speak with them by that date.
Thank you. So that would be my proposal as phrased by the the experts in in phraseology.
Do we have, do we have a second to Councilmember Laura Sella's motion to amend the motion on the table, which is to set it over consideration to a date certain, that being August eighteen? Then seconded by Deputy Mayor Moss, that we amend the motion to set over consideration to a date certain, that being August eighteen. Any further discussion? Mr. Brandstetter.
I'm going to vote against continuing it again. I, while I don't know that we've had any real formal outreach to the folks in 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 Springbrook and in in their neighborhood, I did have some informal discussions with folks who live in in that area, both residents who, and primarily residents who are on the opposite side of the park were here and they 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 thought that the 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 park is able to accommodate additional users given the improvements that we've made in it to to go forward. And I I did talk with the folks at the McCord Market, okay, who were like a lot of small businesses. More nearby residents are, they view that as as something that would be positive, that that they get customers from the existing Springbrook One comment that's there to be able to go and do that. So I'm I'm not necessarily feeling that I that I am without input from the neighborhood, okay, both the business neighborhood and 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 the resident neighborhood to be able to go and do that. The one comment that I got that was I wish not was they said that when Springbrook One was built that 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 there was a an escalation of rents throughout the entire neighborhood and they were hoping, didn't want to see that 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 happen. But you know, as we make improvements in all neighborhoods, that, you know, you know, the rents go up, but not to the point of where Lakewood is now in the top tier of cities in the county, there as far as our rents, we're still quite honestly, as an incorporated area, have the lowest rental average that's there. And I think, don't think this this would, this would impact it. And I do want to incentivize this developer to make sure to move forward with this because I wouldn't want this site to then become developed into six single-family homes. You know, it's seventy nine, you know, units is there in 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 a in an area that could do that. So I'm, uh, I'm I'm opposed to continuing it.
Thank you. Um, I I will speak to it too, and I very much appreciate the concern, Councilmember Laura Sella. When we were set to have the dinner on the driveway out in Springbrook, uh, I got a angry phone call from one of the leaders out there saying, where were you? We were expecting you to be here. And I said, well, there was a disconnect. We told folks that we weren't going to be there because we had another event that night, but what's the nature of the concern? So speaking arguably on behalf of the group that was present, the issue was exactly that. They're concerned about gentrification as they see it in Springbrook, but I I agree with Mr. Branstad that, uh, that will always be, uh, a concern, and I recognize and appreciate the concern, but in the absence of some good development, there will be no additional housing units for the benefit of that community, including uh, the folks at J B L M who are seeking desperately additional off-base housing that isn't necessarily in North Thurston or areas outside of the purview of, you know, Lakewood Central, if you will. So I I appreciate their concerns. This developer, I believe, is maybe different entity, but it's roughly the same one that did the first iteration out there. It's the same ownership group or close to it. They did a good product. Uh, they have been good neighbors. Uh, I think that these kinds of projects bear some developer risk, and we want to acknowledge and appreciate that to the extent we can, compliant with code and the conditional nature of the M F T E application, but I want to make sure that we acknowledge the concerns of the community, but also acknowledge the interests of the development community and be somewhat friendly to allowing positive growth. It creates more units in Lakewood in a smart way, and I think this project knows that for me. So I'm going to vote against the amendment just for that purpose. Any other discussion? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I second that thought just to have this discussion, so I'm.
Absolutely, yep. Okay, so we are now going to vote on the amendment to the motion, and the amendment simply was to continue consideration of the motion to a date certain, that being August eighteen. All those in favor of the amendment to the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the amendment to the motion signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Motion fails. We now turn to the main motion without amendment. Motion twenty twenty five dash twelve. Any further discussion? All those in favor of motion, resolution twenty twenty five dash twelve signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution twenty twenty five dash twelve carries. That concludes the items on the regular agenda. I see no items of unfinished or new business. So, City Manager, the floor is yours.
I have some items that I would like to ask City Council for some direction. We have the Fall Connections Magazine is expected to be delivered to residents on September ninth with our new city manager Doug Russell starting on August twenty fifth. The thought is to have an article on meet the new city manager as your council corner article.
I think that makes good sense.
Okay.
From my perspective, what do you think, council members, on that real quick? Connections Magazine to the featured council corner introducing the new city manager. Are you okay with that? Okay, there you go.
Thank you. Um, Sister Cities, I sent out these emails to the city council. They were rather lengthy, so I was just wanting to get some direction from city council. The Gimhe is inviting the city, uh, leadership or city officials to attend the, uh, Gimhe Ceramics Festival, and this runs November fourth through the ninth of twenty twenty, uh, five, so that's coming up very soon, and you wouldn't have to be there for the full time. The message from the Gimhe International Affairs Office was that this was their preferred time to host the delegation versus the October days, which were preliminary. So is the city council interested in sending representatives to the festival this fall? We haven't actually received the letter, but I wanted to get your interest.
Okay. So when this came up, uh, when the delegation was here, we talked briefly about this um, because we didn't have one scheduled in twenty twenty five when uh, I think there was an opportunity with the Philippines, and that one didn't happen this year. So this is one, it is an opportunity, but it really is a question of of budget, whether we have the funds to do it and what the financial responsibility would be for the city. Is it similar to last time? We just pay for the coach airfare and they pay for the other pieces?
And actually, we don't have any information right now on the financial commitments.
Okay. So if we were to say, if there's some willing or able to go, it would be conditioned upon a prudent review of whether we have the resources to do it.
Yes.
I mean, I I can do that date. I know that they were asking, you know, the.
Yes. They were asking for the mayor's.
Right, the mayor to go, whatever that means sometimes. And it's November four through nine, and I would be happy to try to make that work for my schedule, subject to whether it makes sense financially for us. Anyone else, Mr. Branstad?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you, uh, yeah, the the take don't work for me, but I I I do think that, uh, you know, between the the Philippines and 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 Gimhe and then to a lesser extent Okinawa, we have, uh, you know, um, our our relationships with the sister cities have been healthy and fruitful, and I think that we want to go to do that. And that that may be a date that you and Mr. Russell could 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 travel to 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 Gimhe to get, you know, get him started with understanding the program and and how that would work. But at the same time, I I I wanted to ask you, there was a an email a short time ago from, uh, Ms. Kraus I I about the future of our relationship with the 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 city in China that that was was seeking approval of of their desire to come here. And then the email was like, we want to tell them that we're too small for them. I I I I I I I didn't quite understand that, and I know you're the only one of us that has actually been there.
Oh, well, I I I can answer the question briefly, and then I'll have the city manager flesh it out. As I understood the email and from the visit I made, uh, last year, Danzow is a bigger city. They're a pretty large city in China, and they certainly have interests primarily in their deep-sea port and trade relationships for their deep-sea port that they've put a lot of, um, a lot of resources into. And so when the inquiry came, uh, certainly city manager myself, and I believe Connie Coleman-Lacady on behalf of the sister cities, felt that their their request for our accommodations were really uh, better suited for perhaps support of Tacoma to be involved in those discussions for them. It doesn't mean we can't still be a sister city, but we want to make sure that we direct their attention to those folks in our region. Uh, they can help at least address their inquiry about relationships and opportunities for investment. So, for example, the E D B, of which we are an investor, the Economic Development Board at Tacoma Pierce County, uh, certainly, uh, the Port of Tacoma, which our whole community is, uh, you know, we have membership in by virtue of being taxpayers that support the Port of Tacoma. So we have an interest in that side of the economic development. We could facilitate that, but I don't know if that means that we should shoulder all of whatever expense may be borne on that, but I don't think that is open yet. We don't know what they're requesting from Danzow.
So, uh, actually, for just one correction, Danzow is actually a friendship city. And our communications manager, uh, Bryn Grimley is actually reaching out to the Northwest Seaport Authority for the ports of Tacoma to see if this is something that they would do, like host, uh.
Yeah, we could certainly do a social meet and greet, and they want to do a tree planting, I thought. They did that for us. They put a big rock out there. Uh, they call us their sister city. They don't use the term friendship because it's more important to them that we're a sister city. Um, but I think the economic development piece, we can be a part of in terms of the gracious handoff, if you will, to the E D B and the Port of Tacoma, but we can certainly have a part of it.
So then it gets to, and I just wanted to share also in that email was that the Gimhe Sister Cities wanted to come back here in October twenty twenty five, but we basically told them we don't really have the funds for that. And also pending if they, if the China city, the Danzow, was going to be coming, so.
I don't think we could do two Gimhe events back to back, October, November, is my humble thought.
It's a great event, but it is quite a commitment. The sister cities, so previously, the thought was to invite all of the sister cities to Summerfest twenty twenty six. So I wanted to find out from the city council, is that still the interest of the city council as we are preparing for the lodging tax applications? And so that would be our, um,
Have they requested that, or we're just noodling over whether we send the invitation first?
Um, this is, we haven't sent anything. We just wanted to find out if this is what city council is still interested in. Something to think about.
Yeah. Mr. Branstad?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I I know, and I guess the the idea of Summerfest twenty twenty six is 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 a thirtieth anniversary
anniversary.
type item, and, uh, and I think that the our our chance to to move forward of getting all three or four of, uh, of our, the cities we have a relationship all here at the same time so that we interact with them, but they interact with each other. Okay, uh, I I think that's a, uh, a good idea and is a is an appropriate event to to deal with for a for a thirtieth anniversary, which is, uh, you know, it it's certainly a significant milestone for for our for our community to do that. And, uh, and and I think it, getting them all to here to send something. I I think we would need in our invitation to speak to the size of delegations.
Not to be able to go, 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 go and 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 do that. But also, I guess I, the way it worked out this this year would be open to any of the sister cities that wanted to bring performers.
Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts or comments?
Yes, Mr. Bokey. I think it's a neat idea. I wonder about the capacity of our sister cities group. Right? I mean, there just aren't that, I don't think there are that many people in the in the group that really handles that. I mean, we just show up. And, right, I mean, uh, some people are maybe more involved, but I felt like I showed up to the first dinner, then I showed up to the Summerfest, and I showed up to the second dinner. But there are people who are moving people around and touring people, and so I not, a good idea to bring everybody on the thirtieth anniversary. Maybe not the maybe not practical. Practicable, is that a word? Um, I'm I'm just worried about capacity. I I do want to address the handoff, the warm handoff of the of the sister city relationship with the if we're, if we're down one and we we can either go down to three or four cities or whatever we're at, or if we want to stay at the same number, I think it's an opportunity then for us to have a discussion around bringing in another city from another part of the world. Um, and given our our demographic makeup, uh, probably from the Western Hemisphere, so rather than, um, you know, really heavy on on the Far East, uh, for whatever reason, and there were, I guess, good reasons. And Councilmember Branstad told me that years ago why that occurred. But I, but I think we should be cognizant of the of the relationships that we have now um, and and think about some of our community events that we have, mainly Fiesta de Familia, and how that's been supported by uh, the 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 local Mexican consulate. I think we need to be open to if we do the warm handoff with the, um, and I don't remember the the name of the and we decide, okay, we we still feel like we have capacity for another one, I think we we that's what I would prefer.
That's a good idea.
We we look at something like that.
Give you a little feedback on that. Sounds like we're open to doing something for the thirtieth anniversary, Spring, uh, Summerfest, rather, and then whether the quote-unquote handoff of the friendship city as opposed to hosting them, but really having their needs fulfilled on the economic development side and the port information by others. I think we can accommodate that.
Okay, which then leads us to Summerfest twenty twenty six. So the proposed date is August fifteenth, twenty twenty six because of the World Cup. And so I wanted to get council's thoughts on that, and if that sounded okay. Our police officers will not be available to support the, um, security and such.
They're busy with the World Cup?
Yes.
Okay. Well, it really is Parks and Rec slash Communications Manager getting the word out sort of deal, I think. If they're comfortable doing that, it's probably better weather.
And then I just wanted to also share, um, the roundtable meeting with Lieutenant Governor Heck on August twenty seventh. Our mayor plans to attend virtually, as well as our Assistant Planning and Public Works Director, um, Angie Silva, who will attend as a subject matter expert. And this is the roundtable that is convened to address barriers to housing development and underused commercial properties. This invite went out to sixteen different cities, including Lakewood, and the goal is to assemble a group of city leaders and subject matters experts to want to see more multifamily housing developed in their location. There is an online survey, and I provided the link, uh, the email provides the link to the online survey. So anybody can take that survey, and it's recommended that, uh, Mayor, that you and our subject matter expert to take this online survey in advance of that meeting. And then I'll just jump over to, uh, the upcoming events. So as you heard and already know, the National Night Out is tomorrow. We also have summer nights at the Pavilion Concerts with the House Band of Lakewood, uh, performing classic rock between six thirty and eight P M. On August sixth at ten A M, we have the N Brothers Bakery Grand Opening at, uh, in on Main Street here. August eighth.
Can you double-check that one? Because Linda Smith captured me, and because I couldn't attend that, she wanted to do it on another another date, so I'm not saying it isn't the date you gave me, but she also gave me another date to be there for her, and then I'll find it.
Okay.
Yeah, she she put down Thursday, the fourteenth at eleven thirty. Just just double-double check.
And then on August eighth, that we have at eleven A M, the J B L M McCord Civilian Hall of Fame Induction Ceremony and Community Leaders Social at the Russell Landing Bistro. August ninth, we have, uh, at eleven A M, the Korean American Association of Tacoma Liberation Day Celebration in Tacoma. August twelfth, between six thirty and eight P M, summer nights at the Pavilion Concerts. Uh, Fast Lane performing the Eagles Tribute at Fort Silicon Park. August twelfth, six thirty P M, the Tulacum Neighborhood Association at the Tulacum Community Center. This is one that is not our meeting, so I have no flexibility to change that date. August thirteen, Desserts on the Driveway at Lakewood Library. August sixteen at five P M, Candlewick Glen Summer Picnic, um, in Candlewick Drive. August nineteenth, between six thirty and eight P M, summer nights at the Pavilion, Wally and the Bees, uh, featuring fifties and sixties music. August twentieth, between five and six thirty P M, is the historic, uh, Fort Silicon Sign Dedication. That's not on your calendar yet, but, uh, city clerk will add that. August twenty first, Desserts on the Driveway, Clover Creek Neighborhood at Taiyi Elementary School. August twenty eighth, Desserts on the Driveway at Fort Silicon Park Pavilion. And finally, on August twenty ninth at three P M till seven thirty, the Asia-Pacific Cultural Center Grand Opening of their new building. And then we get into September. So that concludes my update.
Did you say this is a full-time job or part-time? Just checking.
It's pretty much full time and a half.
Yeah. Any questions of Ms. Kraus on the schedule? Are there any dates in August that are not taken with events? I'm just kidding. Any other questions of Ms. Kraus? Okay. Well, then we'll turn to council comments. Thank you. Uh, let's start with Mr. Branstad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I would change it.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, uh, I would, would, I have agreed to make remarks at the Korean Liberation Day, uh, celebration for the Tacoma. Um, Washington, the K- Korean American Association, and so I, I will do that on this coming Saturday.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I had P Rab on, uh, the twenty second, and I would just, uh, encourage anyone that wants to get kind of in the know on what's going on with the parks. Uh, they did a great presentation that covered all parks projects and where things are at and what's coming down the pike. So, um, lots of good information in that meeting. Um, it's a really worthwhile one to, to kind of get a quick hitter on all the, all things Lakewood Parks. Um, I, I did talk, uh, they were kind of discussing, um, some of the mayors, I think, comments about what could potentially be done or, or hopes to be done at the downtown park over by Motor Avenue and, and they really were, you know, thinking that it wasn't really big enough to, to be like a community center area or, or something like that. And so, you know, just, and they kind of kept referencing the, the parcel area. And I kind of led them like, well, you know, maybe think outside the box a little bit because there's lots of extra parking downtown. There's, you know, a huge parking lot that the church, like, we could get creative a little bit and there is space there. We've got the whole motor avenue and like, you know, don't just limit your thought to, well, we have an acre and a half or whatever it is. So think outside the box and, um, you know, maybe there, yeah, maybe we can work something out or whatever. So, um, and then they seemed open to, you know, giving it some thought and, and that kind of thing. So, and then I hadn't been to the Barnes and Noble yet, and so we went to the movies, uh, this weekend and took the kids over to Barnes and Nobles and I think that the new Barnes and Noble is really very nice, well put together, a little bit more condensed. It's not so just big, huge, you know, you're walking for days through books. So, um, I actually think it's quite an upgrade on, on, on their, uh, what they've got going on there. So. And look forward to doing the National Night Out and taking the kids around.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just am looking forward to tomorrow and getting out in the community for National Night Out. Uh, I just think it's a really great opportunity to hear from our neighborhoods, our community, and that is it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first, uh, I want to thank council for good conversation on the flood study we had tonight. Um, and I'm curious about how we could repurpose those funds for better protection of our lakes from surface water runoff. That could mean things like better garbage control at Edgewater Park or, uh, having perhaps outhouses down there, uh, or even, you know, we worry about water runoff as we clean up our street ends. Maybe that's something that this surface water money could go towards helping with. So, um, second, uh, talking about, uh, public comments tonight. Um, I'm curious about what we can do to improve transparency into our permitting process. Uh, I don't know if we can see other people's permits or not, um, but that might not necessarily be a bad thing. So people know what sort of mitigations have been done for things like oak tree removal or, or other various permitting things across the city. In regards to the written comments we've received on Edgewater Park, the city, I feel we can do better and be a more present, uh, contributor to keeping that clean. More garbage cleanup, et cetera, would be, would be a good thing to do since we're going to be investing so much money into that space and it has had a lot more people because American Lake North was closed for so long. Glad to see it's open again. So hopefully that will relieve some of the stress, but, uh, we can do better. Uh, third thing, uh, I wanted to thank, uh, our members of, uh, our Public Safety Advisory Committee who re-upped and we approved tonight. So Ray and Camory, thank you for contributing and continue to contribute going forward. I'm looking forward to the night out tomorrow. Uh, this will be my third one. So, uh, it'll be another great night, uh, to see all of the members of our community and, and really hear what they have to say about things. Uh, and then the last item, uh, it's voting season. I gotta have them in by eight o'clock tomorrow. So everybody get out there and exercise your right and make your voice heard, uh, with your ballot. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, looking forward to National Night Out. Uh, tomorrow night, always, always really well done and people put a lot of effort into it and I'm always impressed by that and, um, hopefully a lot of folks will turn out. It'll be a beautiful evening, I'm sure. Um, really am happy with the progress. Um, Silicon Boulevard, I mean, we, we got through. Um, and I think we did, we got through Summerfest with that, which was a major concern of, of the folks in that neighborhood, which, and they were right to be concerned. But I mean, it was, given the volume of traffic we had, uh, I think that they, they did a good job of, of getting it to the point where it would work well. I think it worked pretty well and, and now they're very close to finishing it. I guess they're, they're painting tonight, right? And so, and we got that notification and thank you. And looking forward to these other projects starting like Interlock and, and, and Nyanza. So it sounds like from what we've been provided by Ms. Kraus that they're, they'll be very close. So those are two big projects. We'll probably hear some negative things about them because they'll, they'll take time. But, um, I think they're really important projects as we continue forward on this. I do appreciate Mr. Laura Sella's remarks about the Springbrook neighborhood. We need to be very careful. I think there's going to be a lot of change in that neighborhood. Um, excuse me. There's already been some change and they were, they were concerned as, as Councilmember Brandstetter mentioned the last time when the, when Wellstone went in, it, it ended up kind of moving rents up. That also coincided with the national movement of a lot of rents going up. Um, but we're also going to see a lot of construction there in the next, mm, three to five years, right? Um, putting in new sidewalks and various things like that. And where we think, hey, that's great. It's pedestrian amenities. People can get out and about. They're going to think gentrification. So we need to, uh, be aware of that and, and, and open to discussion re- regarding that, um, and see where it goes. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend the retirement for Colonel Niasse. So he's have retired and our new base commander is, her name is Jessica R E G N I and it's spitting, I can't roll my tongue the way they pronounce that.
Regni.
Regni.
Best I can do for you.
Thank you. That was better than I did. So she's ta, she is now in charge of the sixty second airlift plane. So that was a good, good event and some of the other retirees that happened that day. We had Colonel Faison Baker came back and one of our favorite commanders. So each, each year, each leader of the base always comes across different as far as the cities are concerned, as far as how they are passionate about it or they are mild about it. So we'll look and see what this one's like. Okay, I did do the dessert on the driveway at Oakbrook Elementary. Uh, great discussion there on, uh, adult family homes. Um, and I will be attending the Hall of Fame Luncheon on Friday at the American Lake Club on Fort Lewis, eleven to twelve thirty, and I will receive my jacket.
Nice.
Yeah, I'm excited. Yeah. And the Samoan Culture Event, that was great, well attended and, uh, a lot of fun. And Mr. Mayor will talk more about that.
What day was that? I forgot.
It was last, what, Thursday?
Yeah, I'm losing track of time.
And I'm looking forward to National Night Out and I have my, the, I have my escort. I'll just say that. It's like our third year together. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, it was a busy week. I did attend the Samoan Cultural Day festivities with the Deputy Mayor. I think it was last week. I forget which day it was, but we both provided comment and, uh, you know, celebrated with them the fact that they do and continue to do so many wonderful events, celebrating the cultural diversity of the community. And of course Lakewood. We were very proud to note that our logo was front and center as the prime sponsor of the event. And I had to joust, uh, with the Tacoma mayor a bit. That we were the prime sponsor, even though, you know, it was in Tacoma that the event was held. And she reminded me, well, thank you because you're spending your money in Tacoma. But, uh, yeah. Nonetheless, it was, it was a good event and it was great. That was some of our lodging tax monies that was used for that event. And obviously it brought a huge crowd, uh, into their, the area. So, uh, money's well spent. Um, I also attended the dessert on the driveway event with the Oakbrook neighborhood. Considerable unified frustration over the increased density of adult family homes. When we started this conversation, there were picking number seventy-five. And now they're like two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty-three adult family homes predominantly in Oakbrook. So we tried to direct their attention to our state representatives. Um, Mari Leva was having an event the next day, so we encouraged several to go there and, and chat with her about their concerns. It should be something we continue to put on our legislative agenda to see what we could do collaboratively with our legislative partners to work on the density issue. Uh, at the very least, we know we're constrained by what we can and can't do, but that may be something we can continue to push the ball, um, perhaps uphill, but continue to push the ball for them. So that was a good event. Um, another event I went to yesterday, I just want to tell you about it. It was called Four P O U R in the Park. And it was an event held by, uh, Lakewood Gardens and the Board of Directors and volunteers. I was one of the volunteers there yesterday. It was an event, because we talked about doing cool things in Lakewood to get more people here. It was an event that was celebrating the gardens and wine and food. And so they had like ten or twelve different wineries present and food trucks. Uh, and the entry price is really reasonable, forty-five dollars a ticket. So it was very accessible. There were over five hundred tickets sold and I was assisting pouring wine for one of the wineries. And I asked people, welcome to Lakewood, you know, where are you from? People from Seattle, Bellevue, Portland, uh, Auburn, Tacoma, certainly Lakewood, Lacey, Olympia. A wonderful use of our lodging tax funds that we provide to Lakewood Gardens. As they're trying to be more self-sustaining, right? Because we told them, we'll give you some monies, but you need to make sure you're doing your thing to raise funds as well. They had the gala. Uh, their own annual gala like the week prior, two weeks prior, and they told me, I haven't had the numbers yet, that it was the most successful one yet. They raised a lot of money. And then this event raised incredible, uh, notoriety, not just for the gardens, but for Lakewood because it's a gem. And people to a person were effusive in their praise about that event. And the beauty of the gardens and the fact that it was in Lakewood. We got to work on a few details, shuttling people to and fro, because even though we have parking, there were a lot of people. But it was a fantastic event that didn't take, I don't want to say didn't take a ton of time and effort, it did, but it, it wasn't a massive, massive production because the winery set up their own tables and they were really spread out and the food trucks fit right in on the, the gravel driveway there. So if you get a chance to do it, it'll be next year. Fantastic event. Um, wonderful to see people come and enjoy Lakewood. So that was great. Public comments, uh, tonight, a couple of things. We heard about the Edgewater Park and I assume Scott, it's City Park, Neighborhood Park. It's a city park, right? Yeah, it's a city park. So to the extent we can, I think there's been signage down there, but to the extent we need to provide an interim sign, I would, yeah, come on up. I would ask that we would do that because we know that when the park is improved, we're going to do a consistent sign like we're doing with all the other city parks. But we need to probably put some signage like no knucklehead activity, all that sort of stuff like we do in all the other city parks.
Yeah. Normally the, the parks do have the signage, uh, and this park did used to have the, the rules sign posted. Uh, at some point it must have gotten removed, um, or, uh, taken down by somebody, uh, that didn't want the rules. But, uh, I noted all of her comments and we will, uh, address those. Um, there has been increased use at the park since the invasive vegetation has been removed. So we added the garbage cans. Staff is going there on a more regular basis. Uh, but I will address the.
What's the thought or the budget availability? I know it's tight. Or porta potty out there. To address those concerns because those are real.
Yeah, we've, I'll look into that with staff. Um, we, we've had one there in the past. Uh, it was removed. Um, you know, it's seasonal, uh, and it was not placed back out there at some point. It's been several years since we've had one there.
It'd be worth looking at because we have some space now, you know, because of the, the property that we acquired, there's more level space to put one. People are parking there anyway.
Yeah, we, we had it located near the boat launch. In, in the past, there used to be, if you remember, uh, some four by four posts with the old Pierce County seven that was there. And we had, uh, put the porta potty right there. So we'll, we'll look into that.
Yeah, it'd be great to do it because I, I can tell you, because I drive by it regularly relatively often, because it's like a few doors from my house. It's really used right now and especially because of American Lake Park was likely closed, it is swamped. And it's fun to see people out there with kayaks and paddle boards, which is exactly what people want to be able to do. So it's like flotillas out there and I think it's wonderful, but they need a place to use the restroom if they can, other than the side of the street and the lake.
Yeah, and we can address the, uh, one of our comments too is the park name sign. Uh, we can do something temporarily, but as part of the redevelopment and the, the park name sign, uh, project that's going on, it'll, it'll get all.
Hopefully they understand that, but something temporary would be better than nothing. Okay. Awesome on that. Oh, Mr. Brandstetter has a question for you.
Yeah, yeah. On that regard, I, I, I think there is a, uh, back from the public comment today. There's a little bit of need to manage expectations about how quickly that park is going to get.
That could be on some signage too.
Okay, and, and, you, you know, and, and whether that's, you know, we approved a contract today, okay, for someone to go and do some, some design work, but, but, but putting a sign, uh, as a part of their work of generating something that is a, the future Edgewater Park twenty twenty-seven or, or whatever.
That's an excellent idea.
Would be helpful because, you know, we, we, we we spent a lot of rhetoric around Edgewater Park for a variety of reasons to be able to go and do that. But you, you, you know, um, park projects take time to actually fulfill the vision. The vision isn't just there immediately that, so when people drive by a month later and it, it doesn't look like what they heard it was going to be like. That, that's part of the problem we have to manage.
Yeah.
But I think, uh, that would really be, be, be good to ask the contractor to, or work with the contractor to craft a, a sign that can be there about what the future is going to be, not just that we're working on.
Yeah, you could laminate what you've got in the packet tonight, just the color schematic of the components of the new park as designed and approved. Just have that on a big board or something. People would probably love to see that.
Sure, we, we've done the, you know, partner progress, uh, signs in the, in the past, and, uh, this is more of a look to what's coming in the future type.
People would probably love that, yeah. Okay, thank you. And then finally on the Gary Oak, uh, public comment tonight, you know, we get this a lot, obviously, but I, I, I don't know if you want to accept the invitation to revisit the tree code. I don't personally think we need to. I think it needs to be, perhaps there is an opportunity for more education, maybe, um, is, uh, Bryn, Brynlee can put something out in the Connections Magazine about a reminder about the tree code and the importance of following the component pieces of it that are material for folks to know. Um, I don't ever recall that we said the world will never cut down another Gary Oak in the city of Lakewood, even though it's our, our city's sort of tree. Um, because that's, that's an important fact for folks to understand and know that while we love them and they're a wonderful species and important, um, it is not a zero-sum game when it comes to that. And speaking of Gary Oaks, so I went around Silicon Lake this last weekend and there were two that fell down, weren't cut down, weren't pillaged without a permit. They fell down, crushed a boat, um, and boat, um, lift. No wind, no dramatic anything. It just came crashing down. And the neighbor who called me said, oh my God, you should have heard. It was like a freight train. It was over by the hundredth street end. If someone had been in the water, they would have been killed by a Gary Oak that fell for no reason. Uh, you know, I'm not. Uh, you know, I'm not casting aspersions on Gary Oaks. It just happened. And then it went down the other end of the lake. There was another one that must have happened fairly recently. They came down and, you know, completely fell over. Things happen on occasions. And so we just have to be mindful that while they're incredibly valued and revered species, they're not immune to things happening um as a result of natural forces. So it was, it was a big thonk when it came down, according to the neighbors, quite loud. So that is all I have for tonight. Two thoughts from Ms. Kraus. As we get into the fall, we want to take a look at coordinating the command dinner we do between council and the two-two brigade staff or the two-two brigade command folks. It's probably worth now that we're in August, looking at September and October dates, it might work. And then in line with that is the Deputy Mayor indicated, we have the leadership that changes over. We have a new two-two brigade commander. We have a new garrison commander. So we should try to coordinate a quick meet and greet between city manager, whether it's you or Doug and myself, and maybe another council member that might want to go to that, to just introduce ourselves and say hello, because I did get an email from the garrison commander inviting me to connect. So that would be great. And at this time, I want to recess for no more than seven minutes into executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty-one ten sub one sub I to discuss a legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions or discuss a legal counsel representing the agency litigation, potential litigation to which the agency, the governing body, or a member acting in official capacity is or is like to become a party. No action will be taken and we will come out of the executive session. Uh, and we will then adjourn the meeting. So we will be in recess for seven minutes.